We call the meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to join us.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Roll call, please.
Grinberg.
Here.
Gehrig.
Here.
Pepcorn.
Here.
Strand.
Here.
Mahoney.
Here.
A lot of you wonder where Commissioner Gehrig is. He's in special training out in New York, so that's why he joins us by phone. I think he misses us, I'm pretty sure.
Oh, I do.
It's Fire Prevention Week in Fargo, which is part of the nationwide effort called Look, Listen, Learn, Be Aware. Fire can happen anywhere. Commissioner Pepcorn has offered to go back to the old saying of stop, drop, and roll, if you'd like him.
He said that, right?
This year's campaign works to educate the public about basic but essential ways to quickly and safely escape a fire, a home fire. We realize in the new City Hall, a lot of us do not know our new fire escape, so Bruce Scrub has offered that we will practice that because it's a new building. All seven fire stations in Fargo will be open this week from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. for tours and visits. Also during October, the Fire Department will visit every public and private elementary school in Fargo, where they teach fire safety at kindergarten, first, and second grade classes. Thank you, Chief. Health. On September 29th, Fargo-Cass Public Health hosted Narcan Training for 54 community members who learned how to safely administer Narcan, a drug that reverses an opioid overdose. All attendees received a complimentary opioid overdose rescue kit with two doses of Narcan. Interestingly, we have such powerful drugs in the community now, one person took seven doses of Narcan to reverse them. So, got some bad stuff out there. Inspections. Preparatory meetings are underway for a new permit and inspection software, with implementation expected spring, summer of 2019. With this new software, citizens, business, and contractors will have easy access online to information for new developments, permitting, inspections, project plan approval, rental housing, and code enforcement. So, sometime next year? Will they not get to visit you guys then, or be all in software?
No.
Really? Library. On Tuesday, instructions from Gaspers School of Dance and FM Ballet will be at the main library for Spooky Ballet and Storytime Session, where the children will hear a story and learn some basic dance steps. On October 16, John Cox from NDSU will speak to the main library about ideologies and modern technologies introduced to the world because of World War I. This event is part of the area library's 2018 One Book, One Community Reading Project. The main library will celebrate National Fossil Day on October 20th with an event titled Age of the Reptiles: More Than Just Dinosaurs. Area children are invited to get a close-up look at some of the live reptiles. Police. Chief Todd went to Minnesota State University of Mankato last week and spoke to criminal justice classes about leadership and how glad he is to be the Fargo Police Chief. Right, or almost got it right? We very much are glad that he can share his leadership skills that he has in our community and has helped the young students there. Some significant casework went into the rest with the two recent homicides in Fargo. Phenomenal work was done on the street with patrol officers and by the detectives in the investigation. Fargo is fortunate to have such officers, detectives, and support staff who have the drive and desire to serve and go the extra mile. And the chief wanted to make sure that we remembered they put a lot of hours in those cases to get them solved. Thank you, Chief. Other. In a column published recently by Tom Roadrunner Blair, he wrote about all the changes he saw while visiting downtown Fargo this summer. He was simply amazed of all the people downtown, all the shops and restaurants, listening to live music from the Wicked Bees, and seeing all kinds of cool stuff. He wrote that he was pleasantly surprised how Fargo's downtown has turned to be such a positive atmosphere, and it is really a fun place for people of all races, ages, and ethnic backgrounds. So, that was nice to hear. Today is Indigenous People Day. Agassi Schools having a variety of events through the day. Basically, their logo, which is on the tee-shirt in front, says strengthening community through reconciliation and healing. So, a lot of what the Native American community wants us to know is a big part of their mission is healing. And we had a good event here. Commissioner Strand was there this morning. We were also presented Five Nations Flags, which is an honor for a community to receive. So, the flags of the Five Nations in North Dakota have given us our five flags to display in New City Hall. So, we'll get those out for people, and then what the flags mean as well. So, it was a great honor. And Willard received the honor from Gladys Ray House for all his hard work in the past and was deeply touched by the honor that he got. So, if you have time, the Paolo's tonight, and you can get authentic fry bread, so if you're a little hungry after the meeting. Commissioner Grinberg. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the Order of Agenda moving Item 3A from the Consent Agenda to Regular Agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Is there a motion to approve the minutes amended September 10, 2018, regular meeting and approval of September 24, 2018 minute?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any changes or discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Approved. To the Senate Agenda, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items 1 through 25 excluding Item Number 3A, which has been moved to the Regular Agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Strand. Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Gehrig.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Moving on to the Regular Agenda. Receive and File Ordinance and Acting Article 3901 of 39 to the Fargo Municipal Code relating to collection of utilities and services. Nancy Morris and Jody Burt-Birtrand to explain.
Good evening, Commissioners. We've been working towards the stormwater ordinance. Changes over the last few weeks to kind of come in line with the fee study we've been doing for the last two years. Just a few brief slides, and then we'll have a motion move forward. What's kind of brought us here today is that the change of the ordinance, presently we are charging a flat fee for all of our services for stormwater. And what kind of bottom bullet point on the first page here is that we're looking to charge a proposed fee based on the usage, if somebody actually uses the system. The proposal presently is for a flat fee of $4 for residential. Non-residential will have, based on impervious area, which we'll determine every three years, or as a new area is kind of developed, with a base fee of $8. Presently, the things that we've done to go ahead and implement the stormwater fee to gather input is seen on the right side of the page. We sent out letters. We've met with the large users throughout the city. We've met with Commissioners one-on-one, and we've held a couple of public meetings in 2017. A few of the things that we're looking forward to doing in the near future through the continued ordinance processes, we're going to hold another public meeting in between the first and the second reading. So, we've kind of got it outlined there as October 30th. So, the way we're going to make that known to everybody is we've got a mailer that we're using with the billing system we presently have. Over the next two monthly cycles, we're going to have a flyer we're going to send out to everyone. It actually outlines where they can get information, who they can contact, and then it also outlines that we have that meeting if they need additional information on how their parcel is directly affected. I do have to say that we have been working for, on our web application, there's a thing they'll have available on the website that anybody will be able to go on the storm sewer site, pull up the local map, put in either their address, or they'll be able to put in the, use the mouse icon and move around and actually hover over a parcel, and then be able to actually see what the fee is and the amount impervious for each site throughout the whole city. So, they'll be able to find out if they're right at the $8, if they're non-residential, or at a non-residential site or larger. So, the path forward, right now, we've got the Receive and File tonight. We have a Designation Motion on the letter that Nancy kind of proposed. We've got an October 22 for the first reading, public meeting in the middle, like I mentioned, over at the library, second reading, where we'll actually approve the rates and fees and policies that we intend to implement for the distribution of the new fee study. So, I guess...
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Commissioner Gehrig?
Yeah, so I just want to point out to everybody that we're not approving any kind of fee structure here. We are simply approving the ability to make a fee structure, if I'm reading Nancy's letter correctly. Is that correct, Nancy?
Yeah, she's not at the podium, but yeah, she has the Designation Motion on the flyer, I guess, the cover letter. This is just to Receive and File. We still got the two ordinance approved both times, and the fees are actually approved the second reading, what the amount would be.
Yep, good. And so, with that in mind and holding public meetings, I hope that this item never makes the Consent Agenda, just so people have the opportunity to speak after, you know, if they don't want to speak at the meeting, if they want to come to the Commission instead, I hope we offer that ability to people to do that. Thanks.
Any other comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Pepcorn and Grinberg, first and second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Strand?
I'm just curious, Jody. As people go more toward different types of materials they're using in their parking lots, more pervious versus non-pervious, do you think, do we have much of that direction going on now, and are we accommodating, or encouraging, or incenting folks to use more porous materials in their parking lots?
I think most of the information we've received to date is that the equipment that you need to probably keep that type of pavement clean, you know, whether it's sweepers or, you know, some type of vacuum trucks to keep the pores, so that actually operates like it's designed to, isn't conducive to our area of the country with the sands and everything we're continually putting down. So, I don't envision a lot of pervious pavement's going to be used. But, that being said, we do have a credit system that's part of our guidelines and stuff, that if people go above and beyond on new development or redevelopment past our normal stormwater requirements, they can get a credit, you know, certain percent of the quickness of the release, or the amount that they release. So, there's two components.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Gehrig.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Item 53, State Water Commission Request Cost Reimbursement FM Diversion Flood Project Costs. Costs on the first one, A, are $9,786. Costs on B are $6,314. Ken Costin to explain.
Yes, good evening, Commissioner. The first request, 53A, is for city incurred costs, $9,786 reimbursable. And 53B is for the Oxbow Project, $6,314. These are for the month of August, which is lagging a little bit in our timeliness. I have one staff person that's out on maternity leave, so we're trying to push these along as fast as we can. So, we ask for your approval of both 53A and 53B.
Is there a motion?
Move 53A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Gehrig.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Move 53B.
Moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Gehrig.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye.
We can do one more thing. You have my recommendations, 55 for the Appointment to Arts and Culture Commission. You have my recommendation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Gehrig.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Might as well do 3A, amending Section 8, 1425, Article 814, Chapter 8 of the Fargo Municipal Code relating to bicycles. Nancy Morris isn't here, but I think we've heard about this motion. Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I pulled this off...
Oh, there it is.
Consent was to give the folks in the biking world one more opportunity to speak up if they'd like to. And we'd kind of alluded to that in our last meeting, it wouldn't be on consent. So, that's all, that is. I have no concerns about this. I will be supporting it unless something comes up that really turns us around on our thinking. But, it's an invite to folks to speak up.
Is there anybody here from the bicycle community or community that wants to speak to bicycle fines? Going once, going twice. John, is there a motion?
I so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Strand.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Gehrig.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Now, I think we go to public hearings. 54A, continue to 11-518, application by Enclave Development for payment of loop taxes for project located at 1312 11th Street North. Now, can lose an operation of 60, 70 housing units and amenity space. Continued from 8-27-18 and 9-10-18 regular meetings, they would like it continued to November 5, 2018. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Gehrig.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Item 54B, text amendment to amend Section 200504G of Article 2005 of the Fargo Municipal Code, Land Development Code, relating to the measurement of building height. Approval recommended by Planning Commission on 9-418. It's the first reading of the ordinance. Oh, Don Crest to explain.
Already here, sir. Good afternoon, or good evening, Commissioners. Donald Crest with the Department of Planning and Development. I'll be presenting the next three items. All three of these items include an amended ordinance prepared by the City Attorney's Office. As the mayor has stated, our first item, 54B, is a text amendment. This is something we occasionally do. Its goal is just codify interpretations that are currently used by the staff. We do this periodically. In fact, in another few weeks, you'll see some more that we're just doing, we put them through Planning Commission of similar text amendments. It just clarifies how the height is to be measured for dormers within the exemptions to the height limits. Here's the text of the proposed ordinance, as you have there. And there's a generic dormer there to understand. It has to do with the way we measure the height there. So, again, a fairly straightforward, just a codification of an interpretation that's been used by planning and inspections for some time. Planning Commission's recommendation is shown on the screen and stated in your staff report. That includes our presentation for this one, sir.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this amendment? Is there anybody who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close public hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'll move the dormy amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dave, second?
Yes, second, sorry.
Well, we got to laugh a little bit.
Any discussion? Commissioner Strand?
Thank you. Is this related to those couple instances that surfaced and came through planning and came through Preservation Commission that were, where we hadn't quite spelled out by the letter, the height requirements of the garages and dormers and so on? Is that what this is related to?
Well, Commissioners, I was not personally involved in those. I was aware of them. I believe that this is, that may have been the thing that brought this to the fore, that we want to just clarify, as you say, we say codify those interpretations. I don't know if Mr. Williams has any more background on that, or...
Commissioner Strand, Mr. Chairman, that would be correct. This just clarifies the difference of opinion on the code and it steps back four months ago.
And then my next question is, does this satisfy the parties that were involved? Do we know?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Strand, I don't know if I have a good answer for that, but I know the one related party that was representing the owner, there were even differences between those two, let alone the city and our approach to that ordinance. So, I don't know how to answer that question. Maybe Nicole or Don does, but...
Yes, sir. Again, we're just, this is the interpretation I believe we have been applying, and perhaps through, as a result of that, we can, we're codifying it. I don't know. Mr. Williams, want to comment on that?
Mark Williams?
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. Thank you. This is a modification of a text amendment of our Land Development Code that pretty much clarifies how this chunk of the LDC has been interpreted for many years. There was some confusion brought up about four months ago with an applicant as to shed dormer. And a shed dormer is what you see in front of you and can span the whole width of a garage. With our code, we've interpreted based on the exemptions in the paragraph below this that specifies it, that talks about not being more than one-half of the width of the roof of the garage. When the shed dormer gets continued from one end of the garage to the other garage, it almost turns it into a two-story structure, and therefore, the height measurements of the accessory detached structure changes, and the intent of that structure is larger than what the intent of the Land Development Code originally was meant for.
Commissioner Strand?
Thank you. So, as I understand it, then, the, one of the concerns was it wasn't spelled out specifically, and yet, we as a city said, well, this is the way we do it, and have always done it. And this is the spelling out of that, the text amendment addresses that, so there isn't a hazy gray area anymore. It's clearer?
Correct.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or discussion? Roll call vote.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Gehrig.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Item 54C, zoning change from multiple dwelling residential to a single dwelling residential. 2127 50th Avenue South, approval by Planning Commission 9-418. First reading of the rezoning ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, this is, as the mayor stated, located here on 58th Avenue South. It's a zone change from a multi-dwelling to a single dwelling residential zone. This building is a four-unit building there. The four owners are requesting that their residence be rezoned to a single dwelling zone from a multi-dwelling zone. Four-unit residences like theirs, which are classified as attached housing, are permitted by right in the single dwelling zones, the SR5 zone. And this building meets the dimensions, dimensional standards of the SR5 zone. And the SR5 zone is within the land use designation for this property, so it's consistent with the applicable plan. Planning staff has not received any public comment on this project. I do not believe the applicants for this are, oh, they are, okay. The applicants are with us tonight, at least, at least two of the four are, and may wish to address the commission. As you see here, the surrounding area, much of the surrounding area is zoned. The yellow here would be the single dwelling, and there are a few multiple dwelling ones here, but it's not inconsistent with the neighborhood either there. The Planning Commission's recommendation is stated on your staff report and shown on the screen. That concludes staff's presentation, and again, the applicants may wish to address the commission. Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to this rezoning? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? We could close public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second? He was waiting for you, John. Give him a chance. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Commissioner Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my question is, it says the zone change is being requested due to the applicant's concern regarding the special assessments on the property. Could you explain that a little more, and also tell us the resolution that this will entail or involve, if it's passed, relative to specials and the implication to the city, or not?
Yes, sir. I may, I may have to enlist my colleagues to answer your full question here, but, and the applicants. But, the basis here is that properties that are zoned, multi-dwelling or multifamily, are special assessed differently than ones that are zoned single-family. And you've had a couple of cases like this before you. I think this may be the third one in the last few months that you've had. It's the same situation every time, that these buildings are, I believe, effectively single-family residences, but at some point, they were zoned to multifamily residence, and because, you know, it was just, it's inconsistent with the zoning there. I'm going to hand it off to the city engineer, Ms. Deary.
Ms. Deary will explain why somebody would want to go to multifamily.
Well, what we're seeing is, so originally, that was zoned multifamily, but the use is single-family. Your capped costs for arterials are different, whether it's an MR zoning or an SR zoning. Currently, we haven't been spreading them by use. We've been spreading them by zone. So, as we go through the task force and evaluate how we want to move forward, that may change also. So, by going back to the use that they actually built on there, even though it was zoned MR, they actually build an SR use on there. That then allows them to see the arterial caps at an SR level.
Thank you. Commissioner Grinberg, perhaps my question will go to you or to whomever, but if the task force on specials is weighing all these issues right now, do we have a sense that this is where they will land, or will we have to revisit it after the task force? Or would it be prudent to see what their recommendations all are before we start piecemealing them right now? Because I'm just wondering about, we're studying specials now, and we're studying the nature of things like zoning relative to task forces and so on. I'm just wondering about that bigger picture as we're in that process now of studying and then coming up with recommendations from our special tasks, specials task force.
Commissioner Grinberg?
Good question. There are some micro ideas and macro ideas. And what I mean by that, macro, which are more, you know, have the ability to have a more of a larger impact on the notion of specials and costs, would require a statutory change in Bismarck. So, depending on what the task force recommends in the report in December, part of it could be tied into any state statute change by the legislature and/or what we decide here at the commission bench. So, outside of that, I can't give you any real clear path that the task force is going. But, after the week, this week's meeting, the next meetings will be just pure discussion about what direction they want to go, so...
If I can jump in. I think, you know, one of the things, as they, as developers lay out and zone parcels, I think there's always an idea of what it's going to be. But, depending on how quick the buildings get built, it may be zoned MR, but they may end up with single-family on there. As they go in for their building permits, they don't always update that zoning. So, that zoning doesn't automatically update it, isn't automatically updated if it's zoned MR, but they put a single-family residence on there. And so, today, what we would be doing is adjusting the zoning for what is actually built on the parcel.
Commissioner Strand?
And I'm okay with that. If we sense that's the recommendation and what we would endorse as a commission, if we have a sense that still being, going to be, still be vetted and discussed and weighed and all that, I'm not so sure we should have, or we should decide right now or not preemptively, you know, when that's still coming forward. That's my only concern is, is will, where will the task force land? Where will the recommendations to us land? And will they reflect this potentially, or could there be a difference?
I think, Brenda, what you have to answer is if they're single-dwelling, the four of them, they do better on specials, don't they, rather than multi-dwelling?
Correct. So, by going to SR zoning, which is what they got built to, they were built to an SR zoning, allows that cap cost to be lower. Moving forward, historically, something would really have to change, I would think. Historically, MR capped costs have always been different, higher than an SR capped cost, because you have your single-family, fewer users compared to the multifamily.
So, they should benefit by the single family. So, regardless of what Commissioner Grinberg comes up with with his new deal, typically, our single families get the best break, John. So, this is just actually making this property what it really is, single-family dwellings. And then, the specials can be applied however they are applied when, if a new, something comes up.
Correct.
Mr. Strand?
Sorry to belabor this. So, then, what we're doing is suggesting to the commit, to the task force, that's how we'd like this to land.
I wouldn't, Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't interpret that at all, what we do here tonight.
What we're doing here tonight is actually reflecting what it is. This is a correction of what they presently live. This would be the planning department say, hey, these people are really single-family dwelling, let's make them that. They're not really looking at specials, they're just trying to identify what it is really by zone.
Correct.
We're not trying to do anything because of specials, we're really trying to do it because what really lives there.
Based on specials?
Not based on specials, based on what the homes are.
Okay.
It's two different things. It's zoning, and then specials are applied accordingly, but you're trying to reflect what's really there.
Correct. So, all they're asking to do is rezone to what is actually being built on the land. Today, with the 2013 policy, if a project is done right next to them, that would then be a lower cost with their specials.
Thank you. That helps me.
Does that, okay.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Gehrig.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Item 54D, Larkin Edition, 3949 37th Avenue South, 3555 and 3611 38th Street South, and 3552 and 3639th Street South. Approval recommended by Planning Commission on 5-118. Zoning change from AG Agriculture to Limited Industrial. First reading of the rezoning ordinance and the plat of the Larkin Edition. Don Crest to explain.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Again, as the mayor stated, here's I-29, 38th here. This property here, it's an industrial area, zone limited industrial. The, includes both previously platted and some unplatted property. The plat replats ported... The plat replats portions of the existing Larson Edition, Collins Third subdivision, and an unplatted portion of the southeast quarter of Section 27, that's up here, into one block with four lots. Regarding the zone change, as you see here on the zone, zoning map, this area here, this gray area, is actually still zoned agricultural, even though it's surrounded by developed areas, the rest of the area is zoned limited industrial, so the zone change will just bring this part of the plat to limited industrial, so the zoning is consistent across the plat. The ally zoning is consistent with the industrial land use designation for this area. The applicant is replating and rezoning this area to offer the expansion of his business and to redefine lot lines between the owners of this property. Again, if you go back to the aerial photo, this is the, the industrial type uses along I-29 here on, on the frontage road. The applicant's representative, Brian Patengale of Houston Engineering, is with us this evening and may wish to address the commission. Staff has not received any public comment on this project. The planning commission's recommendation is shown on the screen and stated in your staff report. This concludes staff's presentation, thank you, commissioners.
Is there anyone present who wishes to address the commission on this rezoning?
Good evening, commissioners and mayor, Brian Patengale with Houston Engineering. Basically, this is just a simple plat to clean up some land sales and then expand it allow for the expansion of, that are facilities. If you have any questions, if you have to kind of explain it, it looks like a big complicated mess, but it's really just cleaning up lot lines, more or less.
Okay. Any question by commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, anybody else wants to speak?
Thank you, sir.
That will close public hearings, do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Grinberg for a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Mr. Strand, you're dependable tonight.
I'm dependable, I'm the guy with my foot in my mouth half the time. Were there any deferrals on this property relative to specials or taxes over the years? Because sometimes, as I understand, deferrals, if you're, if development is jumping past something or it remains agricultural, that we, I'm just wondering, were there any deferrals on this property and would there be any implications from that?
Commissioner Strand may refer that question to Mr. Eberhard if he's here. Is there any failure with this property? I'm going to go back to the map for him, sir. Yes. Back a few years ago, quite a few years ago, in fact, there were some deferrals on that area along 38th Street, which have been removed and satisfied at this time, all those contracts are satisfied.
So here's a question, so the public can understand, Dan, what do you mean a deferral?
A deferral is, is, we take the special assessments and we hold them in abeyance until the land is developed, or it's three triggering processes, plating, request, requesting infrastructure, or they time out.
So they pay taxes on it, but the specials that might be assessed to that property to be held up to 10 years?
Correct.
And then at 10 years, what happens if they haven't developed it?
They can request an extension or a new contract, or the special, the deferral will come off, and the specials will be.
And this was really designed as you build to the fringe, a farmer may have farmland that you don't want to tax at the higher levels, nor get the specials at the higher levels till it's developed, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Strand.
That satisfies me, thank you.
Okay.
The recommendation here.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Peppcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
Item 54E, special assessment list following improvement districts, all have been approved by Special Assessment Commission on 9518, set an interest rate at 1% over aannium for the net rate of the bonds financing said projects they are listed. Steve, pray to explain.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. What we have before you is a list of projects that have been designed, constructed, finalized, the costs have been certified and spread, and at this point, we're looking to change them from costs that have been held out, that the city is looking to recover, and, and put them onto the special assessments. They've been, all of these projects, there are a couple of them, but that haven't yet, but most of these projects have already been bonded, and so the city has spent the money and now is looking at the, the process of collecting the money back from the property owners. There's a total of 26.8 million, affected 7,400 parcels. During the Special Assessment Commission hearing, there were seven parties that presented at SAC, and then since that time, there were three additional parties that expressed concerns regarding their specials. If there are any questions, please.
Chairman, Steve, can you talk to the policy change we made here earlier this year on this, to 30%, or from 70, 30 to 50, 50, and what impact, if any, that's had on some of the folks that expressed concern under the old estimated costs?
Okay, so I think Dan is probably better equipped to speak to those. Obviously, when we switched from the 2016 policy to the 2013 policy, a lot of people's specials went down.
Dan, you might as well take his chair, they're going to be called up over and over.
Good evening. We went from our 2016 policy, which was a percent-based policy, so if we did a struck, a project, 50% was, was funded by the city, 50% was assessed. We went back to reinstated the 13 policy, which was a cap-based policy. So on a water main replacement, the water main, instead of 50, 50, it was capped at $40 a foot, and same with sanitary paving had a, a series of caps also.
So in most part, most people's specials went down with that recent policy?
Significantly, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can you talk a little bit, Dan, about the, so we do, there's, there's the top four of these are for the Park District, that's, we do that all the time, where we, we assist them basically in helping them with their, with how they assess?
Yes, we, we get the information, the Park District constructs the same way we do, they send us their final information with their, with their add-ons on, and we just run the process through the hearings, the hearing process and approval, and then we do the collection for them also.
Thanks.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to special assessment?
Good evening, I'm Chris Gay, Chief Financial Officer for Butler Machinery, with me Charlotte Rush with Moga Law Firm, and I'm here to talk about item number 13, PR17-A. I think there's, and we have filed an appeal or protest in writing today, and I think there's several fundamental flaws, particularly as it relates to Butler Machinery related to this assessment. So I would tell you, first, our initial estimate for this assessment was $107,000. Our actual assessment was $272,000 when it was done. That's over two and a half times the initial assessment. Like, largely due to a change in the formula for how you do assessments in this, this area, allocating a percentage between linear road frontage and square footage. Butler Machinery is an equipment distributor with big equipment, has a lot of land that sits inventory, rental equipment, used equipment, new equipment, these are big machines, motor graders, combines, for, for what was done. Secondly, I'd tell you, the size of the improvement district is too small. I also think, take exception to the banding approach, which really limits who was included. The most notable difference is Fleet Farm was not included in this, even though they are closest, as closer to that interchange than anybody else, or than the next interchange, and not assessed anything at all, despite their heavy retail traffic to their store and gas station. And then I think clearly, $272,000, I think is extraordinarily large relative to any benefit, of which I think there is none, to Butler Machinery as an equipment distributor. Be happy to take questions, I think, otherwise, thank you.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, and we, as noted, we did file a, a letter here, we had appealed back, we had appealed the size of the improvement district back in February 2017, we were in front of you at that time on behalf of Butler. He basically summed up what we included in our letter, basically, we don't feel that the amount is appropriate, considering the benefit to the property. We still feel the improvement district should have been larger, and we really do take exception to the fact that they, the initial estimate was, as he said, two and a half times smaller than what they have now been assessed. So we do contest the amount that they are being charged for their special assessments on this.
So if you enlarge the district, you're saying, taking Fleet Farm or something else?
And that is what we had asked back in February, in particular, you know, I think the 32nd Avenue interchange is the only real interchange that Fleet Farm customers do use, it's heavy traffic, and Fleet Farm has certainly benefited by this special assessment, yet they weren't charged anything. And I know that that's due to your, the banding approach that you use, Fleet Farm is not in that arterial band, but it definitely has benefited from this project, and, and so it's something that we would have liked to have seen Fleet Farm, for one, included in the improvement district.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Dan, you want to comment to that, or, since they did have a question about?
The, the banding process is, our arterial bands, is typically halfway to the next arterial. Fleet Farm is clearly in the 40th Avenue band. So as our setup, when we redo 40th Avenue, Butler, Freightliner, Luther Ford, they, they will not participate in, in that assessment. I, I might add, when we reran this, we, on a commercial property and an MR property, we assess the whole lot. We do it on a square foot basis, and when we reverted back to the cap in this band, instead of being at 40 cents a square foot, they're at 29.67 cents a square foot. So they are lower than the cap, and it's assessed to the whole property, and each one's affected. If you're a direct fronting, you have direct fronting on a large lot, the balance is on a, going to be on a square foot basis as an indirect. They are an indirect beneficiary of this.
So from the 13, 15th policy, they went up or down?
It went down significantly. At the first informative meeting, there, there, they did have a lower estimate, we did not have time to complete the indirect portion on a square foot basis on their lot, so that was the hunt, we did two renditions of, of the work in progress estimate cost distribution. That was just on the front foot part, we didn't have the, and I stated that at the public meeting, that to watch for the tab sheet after it was bid, and it would come out after it was actually bid, their assessment went up to over $400,000 because it was at a much higher square foot cost. Reverting back to the old policy, it brought it down to the 272.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Mr. Peppcorn.
Dan, so you were saying that, so Fleet Farm, they're going to be on the 40th Avenue, it's strictly geographic then, is that what you'd say? It's not the, because, I mean, when, when I drive, when I drive, I mean, you use the 32nd Avenue interchange, so what hap, I guess my view is, the 32nd Avenue, that's a lot beefier street than the 40th Avenue, so how will that go? Because, do you get what I'm saying?
And that's why we use the caps.
Okay.
So in, because of, and I'll use the 40th Avenue, in comparison to the 32nd Avenue, you have a lot more commercial in the area of the 32nd Avenue, so that's going to, that actually brought their, their cap down to that, to that lower number on the, on the indirect. On the 40th Avenue, you have a lot more single-family, where that's just a, a straight cap cost on a front foot basis for a single-family residence. Fleet Farm will pay almost, I would say, most assuredly, they're going to meet the cap at 40 cents a square foot, where they're, they're down, and it will be their whole lot, just the same as we did for all commercials.
Can I just make one more editorial comment? But the one thing I will say, that interchange is much better, and that street is, than it was. I mean, for Butler and Freightliner and all those big trucks, that street was just, and I don't know if Ben is even here, it was just getting pounded, where the, the corner was getting cut, and, and so it was a, it's a much beefier construction than it was previous. And so that, from the standpoint of it being better for their trucks, I think that's, and Brenda, maybe you're the, obviously, you're the, you're the better person to talk about that, but previous to this, it was not, not handling all the pounding that it was getting. So could you talk about that a little bit?
And I just wanted to chime in too, this assessment district is actually larger than most of them. The 32nd Avenue, because there is no northeast-west arterial, goes all the way up to I-94, so you get that whole section to the north, where all the other ones are a half mile either direction of the arterial, so this assessment district actually ends up being much larger than the standard arterial band.
Can you talk a little bit about the, I mean, it was, what was there previous to this? It was not handling all the heavy equipment that was going on that frontage road, wouldn't you say?
Correct. The, the wear on 32nd Avenue, I mean, it was, it was very obvious, and then also the, the way the interchange worked, the operation of the interchange with the new layout has really improved the traffic congestion in that area. And so, you know, and we've gone on to request federal funds to continue moving east, to make those continued improvements on 32nd Avenue.
And just for the commissioners, if they appeal, what, what happens to, where does their appeal go?
To court.
Okay.
And, and.
There's no action, the commission doesn't, we just approve the, we approve what you have as your assessments here today, and they can carry on their appeal in the legal court.
And, and may I add, piggyback on what Brenda said, the scope of this project, the interchange, 36th Street, which goes in front of Luther and heads to the south, that was all covered by the state and federal funding. That was not assessed at all. We assessed 32nd Avenue from the ramps to 32nd Street, and then on the west side, from the end of the ramps to Sienna Drive. So those were, that was the primary area of, of the scope of the project.
Steve, you want to come back to the podium, just in case, there's a question? Just got to be ready, the original proposal, any other questions?
Maybe mine should be directed to Eric, more of a legal, so we have a, a decision to make tonight to approve the tail end of this $26 million worth of work. Point one, I assume we can't pull one out, because it's part of a bundle package, and then back to the appeal, they do have the right to appeal. So our action is, you know, what we need to finalize tonight, and then the, the legal system will.
Right, it, it isn't necessarily an all or nothing, I mean, as this commission has done before, where they feel somebody's warranted in saying, geez, it's a little too high, or a lot too high, or whatever it is, if, if there's an adjustment you choose to make, you're, you're authorized to make that adjustment. It has to come not from a special assessment, but from some other source of funds, but you can, you are authorized to make that kind of adjustment. But subject to doing that, yeah, you either approve the list or, or, or not confirm the list from the Special Assessment Commission. And, and again, if the property owner is not, not pleased with the decision, they certainly have a right to further proceedings in district court.
So those actions could be for, in the future versus what we act on tonight?
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Garrick, do you have any comment?
I do, thank you. Pertaining to the 1% over cost, you know, we, we by and large tell residents that we do the 1% in case someone defaults, and therefore we have a reserve, so that we don't have to find other ways to tax in order to make up that difference. I asked Kent, over the last 30-plus years of his career, how many defaults have we seen in the city of Fargo, and it was zero. So as policymakers, now we have to go back and say, okay, how much reserve should we have then, knowing that zero is that number over the past 30 years? And we always say 1%, 1%, but no one really knows what 1% is. So I asked that question. 1% for this particular package is about $3.3 million, which is a 13.5% reserve. That's pretty hefty. If we did a half percent reserve, it'd be $1.6 million, or nearly 7% in reserve, still a lot, if you ask me, you know, considering the fact that we have not seen any defaults since I've been born, I guess, over the last 30-plus years. So ultimately, the 1% is completely arbitrary, it's just something we're going off of. We need to do more analysis on that, and, and as policymakers decide what percent of the amount we are assessing should be held in reserve, not just a percent above what we're, what we're getting the loan at, is it a million dollars, is it, is it $5 million? Is it somewhere in the middle? So with that, I will not approve the 1%, we do not need to hold 13.5 million, or percent in reserve, and that's just where I'm at, I think we should lower it to one, to a half percent.
Not quite sure what you're saying, because in 2016, you voted for this special assessment bond to be, to take out. So in 2016, the commission voted to take a bond of $40 million out with the 1%, and you voted for that, so if you're voting for anything else now, that'd be a vote to reconsider, and we've always done the financial transaction. So it would be hard for you to put a motion of a half percent, because that'd be considered as a reconsideration, and by Robert's rules of orders, that would not be able to be done at this time, so.
I don't understand what that, what you're getting at, this is a completely different situation, and by the way, since 2016, we've learned a lot about how special assessments are being done. Back in 2016, we were told that no- Back in 2016, we were told that no money was being taken out of the special assessment reserve, and was just being held there. We now know that's not true. So that's my motion. I will not approve a 1%. I will approve a half percent and nothing more.
Eric, you want to clarify that, please?
Well, I'm, A, I, I'm not, uh, you know, set the interest rate at 1%, I guess is the suggested motion. Again, yeah, that, I, I believe Mayor is correct in saying that, uh, most of these have already been pledged toward bonds, and so the city is committed to paying the 1% over the, uh, over the true interest rate on the bonds. And, uh, I, just before the meeting, I found the, the resolution, you can pass that along, that has the language, and wasn't thinking that Commissioner Garrick wouldn't be here, so I did email him the same, the same bond language that indicates that. So we are already committed, and, and so a motion, uh, to, uh, identify an interest rate less than that would be contrary to a promise we've already made on the bonds, and arguably would be in violation of our resolution on the bonds, as to those that are pledged for these bonds, which I understand there may be 90% of these.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Well, I don't think your motion's, uh, proper, so I wouldn't have, there wouldn't be a second to it, but it's an improper motion, because we...
Let me, let me quickly, let me quickly explain. We are not paying the bondholders 1% over, uh, our base cost. We are, we are given by the bondholders a percentage that we pay back, like a mortgage or your car or anything else. Then we go to the taxidermist and say, well, above that, what we're getting, we are charging you an extra 1% to be held in reserve. We actually have a fund that we hold in reserve for the assessments. That 1% has nothing to do with the bondholders. That is us charging our residents more above and beyond the bond we are paying back. So I think that is legalese, and quite frankly, we have garbage.
It's the bondholders' belief that we hold 1%, so they know that we have that money in our area. And special commission, or special assessment meeting last week, uh, which Commissioner Grinberg chaired, we did talk about this with our financial group, and they showed the 0.5 and the 1, and showed the differences for us. I believe Commissioner Grinberg, you can speak to this. No decision was made at that meeting. You're going to wait till later in the discussion?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Chairman, this gets back to a comment I made with Commissioner Strand as well. That'd be on the micro side, you know, is the task force going to recommend a change? You know, the fact is that we're below state statute, uh, which is 1.5%. Many communities across North Dakota do assess 1.5%. We're at 1%. And, and so I, I, I'm a little troubled, troubled by the fact we're going to get in and start micromanaging actions from prior commissions without a result and a report from a special assessments task force that has a list of recommendations. So this seems improper to even be considering this tonight based on action in 2016. But, you know, it's a good discussion to get the facts out there that, you know, this is provided by law, and this is consistent with city policy, and it's good prudent manner of financial resources with the bond markets and our bond rating.
Any other discussion? Mr. Strand?
Mayor, I'm, I'm not sure. Did I hear a motion in his positioning, or was, is it, was it, I couldn't quite hear Commissioner Garrick entirely. Was there a motion in there?
The motion was moved to a half percent from 1%.
So you were presenting a motion to us?
I was.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would say you ruled that out of order based on...
Yeah, I ruled that out of order. Can I have a motion for the...
And I guess I would join in with that. Commissioner Garrick, if a motion at this time on something that's been previously enacted that has a financial implication is similar to like to a reconsidering or to an amending, and you can't. But, but I sure hope that this topic gets vetted thoroughly at your, your task force, of which Commissioner Garrick and Commissioner Grinberg are co-chairs of. You know, this is one of the topics I think we're all expecting you all to really, really work through, along with the other various aspects of specials, but I'm, and, and you're, but so I'm assuming, I'm, you shouldn't assume anything, but that's my assumption, is that these recommendations or not will come through that task force, and, and then going forward, we will have, uh, suggested changes or not. Is that, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Strand, I believe that's correct. And, um, you know, the task force is the folks that we appointed. Commissioner Garrick and I have no direct influence in the task force recommendations. Our job is to provide the information and the background, and the task force makes up their minds, and then we, we, we receive that report as Commissioners. So this has been, this has been discussed, as well as the overall complexity of the bond markets, as well as, you know, trends in, in costs. And so there's, there's been a, a lot of information, education on the topic to this point in time. Uh, this week, we'll, I guess, as the timeline is set up, we'll conclude that information sharing. We have two individuals from Bismarck that's going to, they're going to explain their experience in their special assessment task force, and then it's going to be up to the task force to decide which direction they want to go, and understanding all the information and all the challenges and the, and the issues around, because it's, it's a complex topic. It's not black and white. It's not as simple as dropping the interest rate or dropping the origination fees. Um, this is very complex, and, and so I'm excited about the direction that, and where they want to go to, to bring that back to this, this, this commission.
Mr. Strand?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead. Mr. Garrick?
You know, about a year and a half ago, I think it was, we were at a 1.5%. And then it got, it got said that that's where it was at, and some people didn't like that, and you buy a wave of pen by the mayor and his financial team, and it went down to 1%. No, no one voted on that. None of us Commissioners voted on that. That's just what happened. Um, so to say this is some big, complex change that required a task force to go from 1% to a half percent, that's not true. Uh, we do not need a 13.5% reserve on a, on a fund that has never seen default by any user. That's too much. And ultimately, what we're doing is we're packing our coppers, and people far from know this. So if we see something that's wrong, then you address it, and then the task force can do the macro changes that we're talking about.
In the past, 2016, you voted to issue a bond with 1% service charge on it. That bond was issued. If I will vote, was that at that time? At this time, we're now just, what happens is things are going out, they're built, we know the final cost, so we can finally put to the public what their costs are. That's where we sit today. We're just approving the assessments as they're charged, as the bills came in. You've already voted for it before. If you want to change it, it should have been in 16, not right now. Going forward, you can have an opportunity to do this when a bond comes forward, Commissioner Garrick. You have an opportunity to forward going, you can do that. But the bonds have already been sold, 90% of which are going to pay these specials. So do you have a motion to approve the specials?
I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. I, relative to the concerns and the potential appeal expressed by Butler, uh, a question I have for, for Mr. Eberhart, or maybe Ms. Dering, is, um, I'd like to, one more time, hear the definition of benefited area relative to our use, the...
Dan, is that yours? And you're following state law, right? Correct.
I know we already discussed deferrals, and we're kind of educating the public as we're also thinking out loud, but from your perspective, remind us what the benefited definition is.
The benefited area, water main, sanitary, uh, streetlights, paving, except for arterials, which we use the band, would be anything that would be a budding, an improvement district that would be directly affected by that improvement district. So if you have a water main in front of your house, you have sanitary sewer, you, you have your, your paving and your streetlights. That place would benefit. On a larger scope, on an arterial, we spread that out further because of the, uh, using the bands. It's a, it's a heavier traffic roadway, uh, more usage. Instead of everybody paying for every arterial, we, we cut it up into bands. So if you're paying for 32nd Avenue, you're not paying for Main Avenue. If you're paying for Main Avenue, you're not paying for 45th Street unless, unless you're up in the, closer to the Main Avenue. So every parcel in the city of Fargo is affected by one north-south, one east-west arterial. But benefited in and of itself is, does it supply a need to your property, water, sanitary storm, uh, paving, streetlights?
Thank you. I have one last question, Mayor.
Mr. Strand?
Um, we have a, is it a three-member special assessment commission? Were there any recommendations or any advice, or I'm assuming this came to us with their stamp of approval?
What the Special Assessment Commission does is approves, approves the benefit, and that, that's, that's, that's our charge by statute. We apply, then we apply the cost based on the benefit.[1770.51]